Call the order hour. Work session, mid-month work sessions of Ware County Board of Commissioners of April 25th, 2016, 2:00 PM. Begin with a roll call vote, beginning with Commissioner Dixon.
President.
Commissioner Turner.
Present.
Commissioner Nelson. Commissioner Nelson, he was away on vacation. Commissioner Aldrich.
Present.
The Chair is present. Let's stand for the invitation that I will do, and please believe it, by Commissioner Dixon. Almighty God, I just thank you again today, Lord, for another day that you've given us, so God to come and be together, to make decisions, and talk about our business of all of Wacross and Ware County taxpayers' award. You know, we ask you to be with us this day, Lord. Give us the words of wisdom, give us the words to say that would be most of all important to you. And, God, I ask you to bless each person that's represented here today. Lord, we ask you to be with us throughout this meeting, Lord, and as we leave and go our separate ways, Lord, that you would let your guardian angels be around about us, Lord, as we leave. We give you all the honor and all the praise, for we ask it in your wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hey, thanks all ladies for coming today. We'll have Ms. Perk, his old friend, Darrell, our human resource director, she's coming forward to talk about some...
I wanted to bring the board up to speed on where we are with the... Wanted to bring the board up to speed on where we are with filling the executive director or the economics development director position. We are in the very beginning stage, we're able to interview, however, what we're waiting on right now is the confirmation to the board. So, once we know who the board members are, as they are confirmed, we're ready to move with the process to begin interviewing. We put out an advertisement of, I want to say, 30 days. We were able to have six applications returned. It's not what the numbers that we wanted it to be, however, we do have two potential applicants that we can possibly look at to interview.
Comerces, all have any questions from this board? I know one thing, we're ready to fill out position, move our deductible amount forward, and I think, since we got the new legislation out, we can proceed with making appointments on the board, fill in those lines. Well, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
What, in your opinion, is the reason why so few applicants return? That's only six?
Only six.
That's pretty... That's a small number. That's concerning.
It is concerning, and some of the criteria that we're looking for, we're looking for definitely experienced in that field. What we're finding is, you know, a lot... When I did the salary survey, there were actually other development authorities hiring for the same position. They advertised what their salary was, they advertised some of the things that they were looking for, and from some of the conversations that I've had, they are too having difficulty finding the position, which is why we really want to expedite this, so that the applicants that we do have, we can possibly interview and get someone in that position. But, it's across the board, for whatever reason, this position is very difficult to do.
All right. Thanks. And we'll go to Liz here, Roger Collins, Tax Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'll be brief. For some time, I've been looking at getting a drop box, collection box outside for some of the people after 5:00. And the reason why I've come to y'all is, I'm pretty much decided the kind of box I want, but it's going to be up to, I guess, the board and the manager to decide where they would want to put it, if you want to put it out in front of courthouse. Now, the new admin building's going to have a drop box built into it, and this would be something that could be left here, and I've already talked with clerk records and all that stuff, and it could still be used as courthouse functions, as a box. And it would only be open from 5:00 in the afternoon to 8:01, and there's actually a lock piece that you can slide into it with nothing in the drop. That way, they just go out and come into the office and handle regular business. But after hours, if it's on a Friday or something like that, they'd come in and it would be... We'd just take it as like kind of like being postmark, especially like deadlines, you've got tax deadlines, a lot of people will rush them through. So, if we don't make it, I mean, they can drop it in there, and then we can process it. But it's just something for y'all to decide whether or not... I was thinking about maybe out there close to the mailboxes, for y'all to look at, and the one that's got the price on it, back around. One we was looking at doing, they're coming different colors, and the one I was looking at's green with maybe the yellow writing and the gold writing on it, and it's a powder coating box. And I think that it would work fine.
This is for people that don't want to come in, they've got their taxes...
Well, for after hours.
Yeah.
Now, during the course of the day, they didn't... We want them to come in.
Yes.
That way, they'll get it better. You've got a deadline, you've got people's birthdays, or they come in, they miss it, and they come in that afternoon, they miss the 5:00 deadline, they can put it in, it's still technically the birthday. Next morning, we pull it out and process it as though it's still... It's still that day, no penalty.
There's one you got part, there's one you got...
Yeah, because the other ones, the other ones are about the size of the big mailboxes up there. And I don't see a big... I don't see the use of getting that much, I mean... But, I mean, it's something that, you know, the board, we had to decide, y'all want to put this out in front of courthouse tomorrow?
You did our decision today, didn't you?
No, so I just want to bring this to you, informational, and then we'll deal with it a little bit later on.
Have you spoken with the sheriff about the possibility of this being a... And I know this is far-reaching, but it could be used in a bad way, you know, as towards something being dropped in that shouldn't be...
Yeah, that's...
Have you spoken with the sheriff about it?
I had talked to him about that, but that'd be no different than the post office boxes out here, too. So, I'm just saying, I mean, I haven't spoke with him about that particular thing, but I mean, anything has a potential of being bad, depending on who wants to use it that way.
I was just wondering with what he's going through with the homeland security and the changes he's made, if it's something that you can bring around the board?
I can talk to him. That's not an issue. Certainly not an issue. Like I said, and during the course of the day, there's actually a slot piece that you go in and slot from the inside out, so you have to open it and pull it back out, so in a way you can put anything in it during the daytime.
In the design process of our new admin facility...
Yes.
Are you making arrangements for placing the drive-through where they can do it?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's what I was stating, I had talked with Clark, and there's actually going to be a drop box, a night, like a night drop for, with the drive-up window. So, that's the reason why, when, before I wanted to order it, I wanted to check with the other people, if it'll actually stay in courthouse, if they would be able to use it. I mean, if they can't, then that's really, you know, it's not going to be... It would help out, but it'd be a short-term effect.
Are you saying that this could be moved over as well as having the inside...
It could, it could, but...
I'm just asking a question.
I mean, I could actually, I mean, if we put it here and nobody want to use it, we could take it, and I could get with maybe somebody, I could get with people at the mall or Kroger or something like that, and actually set it out there and be able to have a collection for them. Now, that's not... That wouldn't be an issue, just, you know, I just think that it would be better served if we do here, if we do keep it here, that one of the, one or all of the courthouse functions, if you see on the back, I mean, they've actually got it where it says, "The County Courthouse Collection," so it might be able to work out with the personal court specifically, because they'll take different type of payments. I just want to bring this informational, y'all think about that.
We appreciate it. Commissioner, we have a guest here, we have a tall man, I don't know how many, if y'all have contacted by Mr. Saucy.
Yes.
Could we allow him nine minutes?
Certainly, if you all wish to, absolutely.
Y'all okay with Mr. Saucy? If he comes up, we'll give you a just...
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm here to speak about the item, I think it's listed as number seven on your agenda, regarding approval to approve MSI benefits as program record for your insurance services for 2017. We participated at J... Can I just say, Philip Saucy, 1420 St. Mirre Drive in Wacross, with J Smith Lanier, 600 Memorial Drive Way, Los Georgia. We participated at J Smith Lanier through a request for qualifications that was put out by the county. County sent out information to various people, including us. We submitted a proposal through that process. The committee narrowed that down to several finalists. We came in about two weeks ago, had an interview, about an hour and a half interview in terms of making a presentation to the committee. From those presentations, this recommendation comes. What brings me to the meeting with some questions, I think there's some flawed assumptions behind the recommendation. First of all, when I found out about the recommendation, I was a little bit puzzled and surprised, because MSI benefits is a firm that I've never heard of. I've been doing this for about 20 years, and we do a lot of this, and wasn't familiar with them at all. Began to look at that and search online for MSI benefits, and it came about that, found several places where it referenced that they had four employees, one that said they had fewer than 20, and then one where one of their consultants at the Lamar County Board of Commissioners said they actually had 12 employees. Now, that's fine, but we have more employees in that, in our Wacross office alone, okay? We also went and looked on a public site that actually shows 5,500 forms, looking for MSI. They produced one account on that site, which shows large private sector firms that... The same search for J Smith Lanier produced 115 for that same time period of large private sector accounts. Now, that does not take into account county government accounts, because you don't file 5,500s, but it doesn't reflect our county government accounts either, which are many. In insurance, size means something, because volume of business means something to the carriers, because it brings leverage, and leverage is something that you need on your side. We used to leverage insurance because it were multiple carriers, you had lots of different insurance companies out there, and you get plans from different ones and leverage against the others. The market has consolidated down to where there are just a handful of companies now. There are just three or four companies, and two of those are in process of emerging, Blue Cross and Cigna, and then you also have Aetna and Humana, which are emerging, which means it's going to get down smaller. So, the traditional way of leveraging doesn't work anymore, okay? The second thing where leverage works is that in volumes of business, and this is the only thing that you can have on your side to help you reduce your cost and keep your cost in that. Now, we represent national accounts, we represent the retirees for Delta, Mohawk Carpets, Le Neky County School System with 30,000 employees, as well as the vast majority of the larger employers in Wacross. And we use our leverage, okay, to help our customers, and that makes a significant difference. As an example, I just, I would use an analogy, if Clarence Gooden with CSX came in and called the Ware County Commission and said he wanted to talk about some tax values on some property that the railroad had, y'all would probably get a team together and respond. If Philip Saucy taxpayer called, y'all probably refer me down to the tax appraiser's office. Well, that's the way it works with the insurance companies. We're the largest broker with Blue Cross Blue Shield in the entire state, number one. With United, Healthcare, Cigna, Aetna, we're top three, no number one, two, or three, okay? Most, all the insurance companies were in the top one, two, or three. We have more than 600 employees. Because of that, we have exclusive markets or semi-exclusive markets that not all brokers have. We have a program called Pareto, which is only available to three brokers in the state, and we're one of those. We bring all these advantages to the marketplace that you lose when you go to a broker that has 12 employees, okay? The second thing where it really comes into play are capabilities and resources. When you have a limited base, like you do in a small company, you're not able to spread the cost of resources across an entire system. We have to develop resources and capabilities for our largest clients and our smallest clients, and we spread that cost across our 22 offices, okay? Anybody that has a single office operation like that, it's not able to spread that cost across the system, there's not enough revenue to support that as an expense. Therefore, we have a lot more resources and capabilities to bring to the table than somebody that has a more limited revenue stream and backlog, okay? The third thing I'll mention is from the service standpoint. A firm like that in Kennesaw, which is north of Atlanta, which is north of Marietta, actually, trying to service an account down here in South Georgia, it's a little bit challenging, as opposed to somebody that's a half mile away. And that is an issue that brings unto itself. So, you know, I look at it from a standpoint, when you look at this recommendation to approve this, I would ask that you reject that recommendation, because these things, I don't see any way that it benefits Ware County to go from fewer leverage with the insurance companies, when you could have the opportunity to have more leverage with the insurance companies. I don't see any way it benefits Ware County when you go to fewer resources than you could have more resources. Any way that you have service from Atlanta as opposed to local service, okay? I've been doing this for 20 years, we work with some of the largest companies around it, and I don't see any way from a factual basis that you can put this package together and make it work for the betterment of Ware County. So, I'm presenting to you the information as we have, and be glad to answer any questions that you might have about anything else. Yes, sir.
Did you give our people a list of...
Well, we...
People that insurance folks carry?
We provided references.
Wacross or Black Chair or Douglas or whoever they brought along?
You know, we provided references, and we, which the county was able to check, references of county governments that we represent, represents of large nonprofits, of public companies. I mean, we have 1,100 accounts at J Smith Lanier, we represent virtually every major employer in town, including biomass, Gapville Homes, Carolina Skiff, Steeler Candy, Concerned Services, City of Wacross, City of Thomasville with 500 employees, Lee County's Board of Commissioners with 300 employees, you know, the list can go on, Charlton County. So, there's a list of companies that we work with and have worked with, some of those relationships extend 15, 20 years. And it's because of what we do in the work that we deliver to manage those costs. We benchmark the area here, we look at cost in the area, and the cost for the Ware County benefit program is higher than the cost of what we see on our average benchmark, okay? To the tune of about, if we actually were able to get Ware County's cost down to what our average was with our other clients, it would save Ware County about $700,000 a year, okay? But your paying, your costs are that much above what our average is in this area. And so, again, you know, we don't do magic, but it's the things that we do, it's the leverage that we use, it's the strategies, it's the resources, the capabilities, it's all rolled into one, okay, which makes a difference in terms of managing costs. And in a corporate world with insurance now, it does make a difference in terms of how you're able to leverage those markets, because the way we used to do it doesn't work anymore.
You say you can save a $700,000. How does your policy, or your whatever policy stack up with the one we have with United Healthcare?
Well, this is actually based on your cost...
That's why we've got to prepare apples to apples now.
Yeah. This is actually based on the information that you provided me two years ago. So, it was provided to me, manager provided me with information in terms of benchmarking your costs from two years ago, so I'm benchmarking your costs from two years ago with our 2016 numbers, which I have to say the numbers have probably changed even since then. So, again, and we look at it even from an industry-specific standpoint, so we look at like our county governments against this county government, because, you know, again, benefits are a part of compensation with most county governments that we work with, and so you tend to have richer benefits and lower contributions, okay? And there's some quirky things that we see in terms of your contribution structures. So, there's changes that intuitively we look at and we say, "That doesn't look right." But that will be part of the analysis that we go through, is look at that and make recommendations. We don't make any decisions, decisions are always for our clients, but we lay out options, and we lay out strategies, and we have plans, and we say, "You can do this, and this is how it impacts," or "This," and it impacts. And that's the role that we play in terms of working with our clients. Some clients have lower deductibles than you do, some clients have higher deductibles than you do, okay? But, they're all pretty close in terms of looking at the changes.
Commissioner, y'all got any questions?
How is it that competitors, when they merge, produces a more competitive environment? I mean, why, what would motivate them to give us better rates if they are, they're not competing against each other anymore? How does that...
You mean from the insurance company standpoint?
Yeah, from the insurance company standpoint. I mean, if I were in business, and I had someone that was my only neighbor who was in business and competition, and said, "All right, let's get together, and we don't have to drop our price, because we're the only game in town." So, how does that work?
Yeah, it's an interesting question, and an interesting dilemma. The Blue Cross Blue Shield, Cigna deal, okay, is, they're kind of holding all kind of hearings up in Washington with the Federal Trade Commission in terms of whether this is going to create too much power consolidated into a single entity. Right? You get too big insurance, and you come down and reduce that competition, what does that do to price? Well, they argue price is going to go down, right? Some people argue price is going to go up, but we've already seen a lot of consolidation in the insurance industry over the last several years. You know, we used to have companies like Principal Financial used to do healthcare, Great West used to do healthcare, Coventry used to do healthcare. They're all gone. American Medical Security used to do healthcare.
Is that why my deductibles and my premiums are so much higher now?
That could be part of it, absolutely.
Don't you think that's the reason?
It's because they have consolidation. It's consolidating down, and if you don't have the volume, you have no other leverage, right? Just to your point of what you said. And so, you know, when we go to Blue Cross, or we go to United Healthcare, they're not looking at the 250 lives that we have at Ware County Board of Commissioners, they're looking at the 50,000 lives at J Smith Lanier.
But if you had a company that says that you only have a dozen employees, your overhead is really, really low.
Right.
You have a company that's got 600 employees, your overhead is very high...
Mm-hmm.
Which means you have to elevate your business model.
Right. The business model is completely different. That's right.
I'm not getting the, you know, I'm a little slow in that area, but numbers are numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I'm trying to figure out just how is it that you're going to be... Where did you come in at in the comparisons of the folks who were invited, or who were, who put in a bid? Where did you end up in that?
I have not seen the results. I just know that the recommendations were something different.
Okay. And the other company was...
Well, technically, they came in, when we did the finalists, with the final entries, they were number three. When we selected the three finalists, one of them, they came in as number two.
Oh, okay. Oh, out of the three?
Yes. Out of the three, he was number three. J Smith Lanier was number three.
Okay, all right, good. So, we really, at this point in time, I don't think that, Mr. Chairman, that we've had the opportunity to have a conversation with the committee members, because we didn't inject ourselves into that process. We allowed the, for the committee to do the review, and this is what we're here to talk about today. So, you know, until we hear their recommendations, until we hear how the results actually came about, we don't, we're in, we just haven't been brought up to speed yet.
Okay. I think the company will...
Okay, now, where...
When we initially sent out the RFQ, they came in and I want to say, number two. After the interviews, the oral interviews and the presentation, they were number three.
Number three?
Of the three.
Three of three?
Yes.
We really need to talk about this.
Yeah.
Give us a time... We need to have a conversation.
So, is that tabled today? Is that...
I think it needs to be tabled today, and let's talk about it here, and let's get all the information, because...
We won't take any action.
What I'm hearing, you had the opportunity to present yours at the interview, right? You presented all your facts and all the pricing and that, and what have you.
That's right. We had a little bit like this, and then a subsequent presentation.
And everyone else did the same.
Before we recommend tabling, there's some information that you will want to know as well.
Okay.
We can get to that once you get into town.
Let's do that, that way we can, we can... Could I ask who number one and number two is?
Number one was MSI, number two was Shaw Hankins, our current broker.
The ones that are current broker.
Okay. Let me explain the process.
I would suggest that.
Yes, they did explain the...
We don't totally agree to table it today, but we will present the information at your consideration, and then, obviously, you can table it, but there is a timeline that we're dealing with here, as usual, in our renewal process.
What is that timeline for?
Well, it's in our RFQ, and I think by May the ninth, we have to have educational meetings...
We're not going to table it for a reason, we're going to do it. We're going to do it.
Let's put them, let them present the...
Yeah, that's...
We have to have a call...
We're not going to take a long time to...
We have to have a call meeting to approve.
Yeah, this is going to be called, this is going to be done pretty quick.
We've got the timeline there, so...
But right now, we're going to just put this on hold.
Thank you, Mr. Saucy, again.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Mr. Saucy, did you do this back? Copy, I got it from you.
Thank you.
Okay, Comerces, we've approved a contract, Georgia Department of Transportation, Mr. Manager under Tab A.
Yes, sir, this is a project that we discussed, and it comes with federal and state dollars tied to it, obviously, and it's a contract between Ware County and Department of Transportation for engineering services on the acquisition easements that we need to meet the approaches on our runways, and so, all said and done, $57,591, our federal dollars, $3,199 for state dollars and local dollars, which we approved during our budget process. In fact, we actually approved a little bit higher amount during our budget process than it came in, was $3,199 of D.C. sent.
That's a good deal.
All the supporting documents are followed, and it's a contract with Croy, who is our engineer of record at our airports, you know, we have to do that through a selection process, much like the broker selection process, and we shortlisted that down, and it's Croy Engineering, and they've been our engineer for two consecutive five-year term, actually longer than that, but I know for two consecutive five-year. Federal Aviation Administration and Georgia Department of Transportation make us select these engineers of record, and then we use them to work out our capital improvement plan, and of course, we approve that annually based on our recommendation.
Comerces, y'all okay?
I'm fine with it, man.
That's a good deal, spend $3,199 of D.C. and get $57,000 in return. Pretty good, okay. Good item, two, under Tab B, Comerces, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir, this is a lingering issue that we've had, you know, we've had several people sign out in the Woodell Ridge, Woodell High Subdivision, and this is one on parcel 034C 02016 on Woodell Drive. They would not agree to signing over the right of way, so of course, we'd have to move the condemnation to fair market values established, and of course, with all the standards out there, consistent with all the locks, and the pro-rata share, and the math... there, consistent with all the lots, and the pro-rata share, and the math that we do for every lot and their impact, and so we recommend condemnation of this parcel, 034C, 02, 016, and all the supporting documents.
How long has this been going on, Paul? How long have y'all been, have you been trying to get this taken?
Well, it's been quite a while. We've had several people that have agreed, and I think we've had two other condemnations.
Clerk?
The county clerk. And so, three parcels out, and I'm going to say about 16 or 18 have held out, and this is one of them, and they want compensation, so we would have to go through the condemnation process.
To, to get to that.
It's been, it's been two years?
It's probably at least acquisition-wise approaching that.
It's been two years.
Yeah, the right of way is not that...
It's a slow peacemust, so it's 10-foot slow peacemust, it's no, well, it's perception, it's according to opinion, you know? People think that, you know, it's a big impact, and, and that's their right.
But even a value, I mean, looking at a term of value, it's, it's really...
It's a small percentage.
It's very, very small. I mean, you could...
That's my, you know, that's my view. We've done a lot of infrastructure work in our community, and we've impacted a lot of lives.
And those folks are waiting to get their, their street done.
Right.
Like everybody else.
I wouldn't let a 10-foot slope keep you, get the paint.
It's pretty easy to, I mean, paint.
Y'all okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, about a part, we've done, we've done our call meeting. Item three, under Tab C, Commissioners?
Yes, sir, this is an annual contract for nutrition program services agreement with Kenny Community Health Center and Ware County Board of Commissioners. We act as a pass through the Regional Commission for con, getting home delivered meals, and this is our contract that sets into motion July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, our contract for them to prepare the meals at the Nelson Green Center. And they submit an invoice to us. Elizabeth Hope in our grants and accounting office over here does all the paperwork for us, does an excellent job, and so we recommend approval of this nutrition services provider.
Commissioners, y'all okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, place that one, send it in. Okay, item four, under Tab D, Commissioners?
Yes, sir, this is a request to appoint an individual to Georgia Department of Haggard Health and Government Misability Regional Advisory Council, and the later, from Mr. Berry, is included in your package, the eligibility, yeah, it must reside in our county.
Did we get it?
We got anybody? Who's from Field that Fly? Is that the one that letter I brought to you?
Yes, sir.
That's somebody?
You had suggested Scott Pickman.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, any of us, yeah. Did he, has he accepted? I haven't called him, other than him making some...
Mr. We haven't sent anything to him.
Okay, well, let's, let's put him on there, and he, he won't accept. I'm sure he will, he's very much qualified for that. And he, and that was his word to me, was if we ever had a committee, you know, that's kind of a medical background position, too.
Jimmy, did you want to be on there?
No, sir.
I think Ms. Ola has, don't you have some paperwork on here?
The information you dropped off.
Yep. All right, item five, under Tab E, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, approval of marijuana consumption on premises license for solar food, number 25, at 3,900 Brunswick Highway, Waycross, Georgia. The old Griffiths convenience store.
Patel's back, Brett Jankis.
They have an active license now, it's just the store has changed its ownership, and so the new law has to come and get his alcohol license. He didn't have anything to, to have a license. So he's, he's good to go.
He's good to go. Commissioners? Put it on there, gentlemen.
Horse's name.
What's it?
A.J. Kumar Patel.
How do we know that?
That's as close as I can get.
How do we know it'd be Patel?
That's a gentleman, they have to be those guys that might attach rings.
Is that right?
Sure. Okay, Mr. Manager, item six, Commissioners, under Tab E.
Yes, sir, House Bill 1108 amended the Act, creating the Waycross Ware County Development Authority, and this is an opportunity to restructure and reappoint the board, according to the new law, and the only amendment of the whole Act was Section 2, and it's pretty clear to reset the board after the date of the governor's signature, and so that's what we're here to discuss today. Three appointments, a one-year, two-year, three-year appointment, and then, it does not specifically say it in the law, and we'll let our attorney lean in if she wants to on this, but I would think that the chairman's appointment is a four-year appointment, based on that provision now. That doesn't specifically spell, spell that out in the law, and you don't want me reading the law, because you know what, by interpretation, normally different from the attorney, would you?
I think that's accurate.
That is.
Paul's actually right this time, yes.
I really have some other things about this law, but I...
Well, the rationale behind it, of course, is so you get your staggered board, and then once it's started, you're going in your four-year terms, so that makes sense that you do it that way.
Chairman, let me ask you this, about the appointments for the three, I mean, the board appointees. Didn't we discuss Mr. Willis being appointed on there for the county? So, as one of those three? So where do we, where do we need to go with the...
This is technically a new appointment of a newly made up, it's the same board, but the way the appointments are done are different, so my understanding is you don't have to appoint any of these three if you don't desire to.
You just answered my question.
Appoint three new members, or you can choose, you know, whoever of these you would like, and then, of course, for your fourth, those three, and then for the fourth position, either the chairman or his designated will serve.
Well, I, I think that they would be, they would serve out the term, if we had reappointed them now, they would be in there for another 12 months, another 24 months. Is that right? So if we're going to make a change and have Mr. Willis there, then we need to go ahead and appoint him today, in one of those, one of those chairs.
So we got two of them that expire 12, 30, or whatever, just one?
Just one. My recommendation is we go ahead and appoint Mr. Willis to the one that's closest to expiry date. And my second recommendation is that, Mr. Chairman, be the appointee for the county. And I think that will, and then, these other two, let's see, it's, here's the thing I have about Mr. Wright, he's, he's trying to move to Pierce County, so he's going to be leaving that post as soon as he sells his house, and he won't, he won't be qualified for that, which I think that's covered under the, the new statute.
I think it should be over 30 years of age, and you're a resident of Ware County.
So we're, we're good with those changes, and then when Mr. Wright moves, and we can have a point of his...
Right. So we, 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 we okay with James Willis to take Todd McCarthy's place?
Right, and then, and then you, Mr. Chairman, represent the county immediately. Right. Put that on there.
Put that on there, yes. Right. So what we doing?
So you, I'm just, I'm just your administrator, I'm not a bugger.
I have a question now, I'm not wishing any bad luck, but if you don't get reelected in that, in that position...
Well, it'd be the next man.
Then, then the new, the commission that takes over in January, what?
No, the chairman automatically is...
Or maybe it's automatically, the new chairman?
The chairman, the chairman has the ability, the authority to designate, but he certainly serve out four years, or he could designate.
I didn't mean it in a...
He could say the same thing to you.
I'm saying...
Duck shot or buck shot?
Well, wait after that question, whoever gets the most votes.
That's right, exactly. It's not like we got super delegates.
Okay, y'all okay with that? Madam Clerk, place that on the agenda, we'll deal with that. All right, item seven, under Tab D.
Yes, sir, this is a request to approve MSI benefits group of broker records for all Ware County insurance products, beginning with FY 17. And just part of the process and the explanation of the process is, first of all, people are involved, so it's not a perfect system. But I would like to thank our committee members for a job and a lot of homework they did to help us put together a package, which I think was a good package, and it was similar to a previous package with a few changes for, obviously, healthcare, law, and actuary information, stuff of that nature. And it is for all of our products. Two, Shaw Hankins was our broker record for, basically, six years for two terms. Prior to, and leaning in on what Mr. Saucy said, one year we had, and they say it's a cycle much like the business cycle, we had a terrible year in the self-insured market with the stop-loss on the self-insure. So, Mr. Tillman was part of the original process, who was an independent consultant financially, and he said, "For a period of time, with the, we don't have a tolerance for the risk of the self-insured market. It ate our lunch." It, there are good and bad components of it, but anyway, leaning in with that, Shaw Hankins was our broker record for years. We did the interviews, each from a short list of about eight people, and our panel, who was here, and Ms. Seer, our payroll administrator, all sat on the panel, and we scored independently what we thought of each interview, again, leaning in on the fact that people are involved. And believe it or not, our current broker, as Mr. Saucy said, he called with the same concerns, and I understand their concerns. Somebody has to be selected. They may have leverage in the market, they may have the better product ladder, whatever, in the imperfect systems, they may save us money. But long story short is, we've never rivaled the premium that we had, and I don't hold me to this number, but $4.2 million was our experience one year. We may have had the worst plan, it's about the time I've been in the position, July would be six years. So we decided with our risk tolerance to go into fully insured pool. Since then, we've never even come close to rivaling $4.2 million worth of premiums. But guess what? They said the business cycle in economics is seven years. Well, six years in, seven years in, we've had a terrible year, and you've been informed of that as a commission. Our premium has been outpaced every month with claims. Now, I've asked in the markets, in the fully insured, self-insured markets, and all, is somebody's pricing that much different that we could have a 6% or 8% swing with the experts, the risk managers, the underwriters, people of Mr. Saucy's status and all? And they said, "As a rule, you probably, for some products or some services, could get a better discount from Blue Cross, or United gets a better deal in this arena, if it's respiratory, or radiology, pulmonology, whatever." So, long story short is, what I have found is there's differing opinion in the insurance arenas. The broker arena the same way. I got much the same response as Mr. Saucy, because we didn't decide Shaw Hankins, and all the money they saved us, and how much better they are, and how much better they leverage. But long story short is, in our imperfect world, we recommend MSI. MSI has, you know, 15, 20, 12 employees, whatever they have, but somehow, they must be doing something right, because they have over 40 public clients. That's not the reason why we made our decision, obviously, it's presentation, it's market presence, it's all kind of other things. And we understand all this, it comes with, you know, commission, brokerage fees, leverage, better service, whatever. But we made this choice as a committee, and as imperfect as it may be, it's our recommendation. Now, we can go all the way, we can dig back up the paperwork, they did an excellent job on RFQ. They did a good job on the interviews. It's not that, it's just who scored the best in our imperfect world, and this is who we recommend. It's your vote, as I said, I'm an administrator. When it came down to the final selection, I actually removed myself from the table, and I let the three committee members make the final selection, and I told them, as an administrator, that they had been through the same paperwork and all that I had been through, but I would own their results, and if they were bad results, I'd cover every base, every bad decision, because I'm the administrator. And that's what I'm supposed to do as a representative of the county, is try to take my imperfect processes and make the best of them for the taxpayers who pay the bills. And I will own any shortcoming, if you want to table it, not, you know, look back through our paperwork, look back through the score. Mr. Saucy, as part of submitting public documents, he can dig through all that, we don't have anything to hide. But, long story short is, you know, the biggest, strongest, most physical teams don't always win in the end, and neither here nor there against him, but I will own the decision of the committee, because I believe in the imperfect process when people are involved. But there's been no, no shortage of homework, no shortage of study, no shortage of commitment from the committee members, and so I would just like to say, "Thank you for being a part of the process and helping me do my job as an administrator." And we do this all the time, we would be glad if the commission wanted to be a party to these RFQs, RFPs, bid processes, whatever they want to do, fine. But when I bring myself into a committee, I don't bring myself in as 50% of the committee. I bring myself, if you've got a four-person committee, I'm 25% of the committee. I'm not there to dominate the committee or the thought process. Now, I did approve, find approval of the RFQ, but I will own anything that the selection committee and their recommendation for MSI, because I scored MSI the highest myself. We were not allowed to look on each other's paper, and that's as far as I lean in on the situation. And as far as I intend to lean in on it, I'll give you any amount of paperwork you want, any of the score sheets, you know, the binders that they submitted, and I understand, they put a lot of work into an RFQ, and we need to honor that and appreciate that, and we do. But long story short is, MSI, small, big, large, whatever, they must be doing something right in the industry, because all their clients are satisfied. They have a lot of public clients, and ACCG knows who they are, they don't have a short reference with them, they've got a good reference with ACCG, and so that's just my story, and I'll leave it up to the board, whatever you want to do.
Dr. Perrin, is you part of the committee?
Yes, sir.
From a doctor's standpoint, give us...
Well, I'll tell you, and, and, hold on, I didn't necessarily agree with this all the time, but each of these brokers do the same thing. They, they peddle the same products, if I may put it that way. They go to the secondary market, whatever, when they negotiate, they're dealing with the same group of companies in every situation, for about the same products. So the first thing I would say is very difficult to, to vet them or choose one from another. And... And I'm very impressed with Jay Smith and Lanier, and I rated them very high. And I used to say that whichever one we chose, I don't think we'd be in the state. Because you've got the same product for about the same price. And, literally, when you look at the companies they go to. And they all had the double A, triple A rating that we looked at. The reason we liked MSI actually, probably say, we thought they had an edge by having so few employees because they're so tough and a lot of footbends, everything's automated and processed. And they actually, my understanding is they have fifteen employees. Now, that...
Fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, yeah.
And that actually seemed like a plus because of automation. I mean, we all know our jobs are going to be taken by robots someday, and probably someday soon because the fewer human hands that filters through, sometimes the better. And again, we shouldn't be wrong about that. The other thing is the forty-seven public, either municipalities or county governments that they represent in Georgia. And they offer every, everyone that they, every client they have as a reference. Nobody else does that. Most companies offer up, obviously, every single client they have, they list it on the reference.
We were supposed to call three, but I know between Amber and myself, we called a good many of them. And I called one of my old next-door neighbors, Sumter County. And I know she thought that we were stealing them away, but she was blown. And another part of the ACA reporting, how they just jumped in and just took hold of that, a new product that a lot of HR people, this was, you know, newly introduced. And they took the reins on that, and they promoted, they would do it for us at no charge. So, that was one of the factors.
Well, I'd say in terms of cost, you know, Shaw Henkins, they demonstrated a lot of cost savings, it looks like in the movement. But it's kind of like commodity charts or stock charts, you know? When you go back two years and say, we could have saved you $700,000, well. Looking back at my, and I respect the numbers, but I had trouble with that. And it's troublesome to look back and say, you know, you could have saved us $700,000, perhaps they could have. Shaw Henkins, they demonstrate, they've saved a million plus. But again, to me, it appears that they're all doing about the same thing for about the same price. And I mean, no offense at all to Smith and Lanier, they serve to see their way, but also, I mean, I'm like Paul, if you want to look at this, I encourage you to because it's difficult.
Did any one of the companies guarantee savings in writing to the county?
Not at this point. We saw percentages, and if I'm not mistaken, we don't pay the broker, the companies do. But they all claim to be totally independent, right?
Right.
And they, you know, Jay Smith and Lanier, they have very low commissions on some products, listed, and higher on others. So, it's not a story, it came out looking pretty good, but I mean, we look at the overall package, it's not just bad. And I mean, HR support and everything, it just, from the time we got the proposals, the company called by, I mean, of course, all told us, don't look at that, you know, look at the media. But I never could go away from it, when they came in and gave the presentation, they were extremely confident, again, offered up every client as a reference. And I think...
And everyone had positive feedback, a history of positive feedback that we know of. And again, they're all there to be solicited.
Most of your brokers are quality brokers and, you know, preeminent double A, triple A rated brokers are willing to put some of their commissions at risk for failure. I have a question in the RFQ. I'm sure brokers are willing to do that.
I wish I was putting a paper status on the board. But I think that this committee was putting a vice to do a job, but a very difficult job to figure. If this is their recommendation, then I accept.
Until we've heard from the committee members, and from Mr. Jay Smith and Lanier representative, you know, I take what they say as factual. I'm not going to challenge any of it, don't want to challenge any of it, because I know what a process of vetting is all about. And, you know, we have, and no negative reflection, but we do have some pretty good and real sharp individuals who work for the county. And they do their due diligence, they really do. And we've always had a lot of confidence in their recommendations and the information, the feedback that we've always gotten. And we give them a lot of latitude because of the fact they are professionals and they handle their, they handle their tasks. So, saying that, I'd have to go along with Commissioner Aldridge that, you know, at this time, that I'm going to go along with putting it on the agenda to vote on.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
The, my difference in why this place was chosen over Mr. Saucy's place, was it price alone that played the difference for him?
No, sir, in fact, the interviews and the scoring was done prior to the submission of the proposal. And so, that took that out of it. We did the interviews, I think, on the Wednesday, the proposals came in on Friday. Now, the recommendation from the committee was made post that Friday. So, that's imperfect in and of itself. But the scores for the brokers were submitted prior to us knowing the pricing. Because reasonably speaking, yes, there are some derivatives and things you can do with packaging and all that, and there may be some percentages or whatever that they can offer that the other one cannot. Book of business, you know, large accounts, we get that, and large employee base. They sell a lot of insurance products at Jay Smith and Lanier, they have a presence in our community, they pay taxes in our community. But if that was going to be the credential and/or the qualifier, then we just don't do the process and say, here, take care of our business for us, and we trust that you're going to do a good job. And they very well may. They've got good references, nobody's knocking, you know?
Well, my biggest problem is, is I hate to sell this money to Ware County.
Well, it leads to Ware County anyway, because you're playing...
Well, I understand, but still, it's...
Or United or...
Yeah, I like doing business with local folks as opposed to doing business with folks in Atlanta. You know, I think people locally should get a first shot at a deal with them in Howard County.
It's, like I said, if that's the credential, we should have had some kind of court card that gave somebody a one-up for being a local vendor, and we didn't do that. We watched it across the board. And like they said, they, you know, but they do business all over the state, southeast and all that too, in areas where they don't have offices, just like MSI. And yes, that's a consideration. You know, north of Atlanta, as a consultant, but your main benefits group for Jay Smith and Lanier is over in Old Benny, Georgia, which is, they got that with Shaw Henkins, who's out of Carterfield, so, and they've got a location now in St. Simon, so, you know?
Well, when I looked at the counties that this other company did represent, cities and counties, there was nothing south of Blackley County, which is Cochran, Georgia, just pulling Lincoln.
Sumter, damn, say it.
Pardon?
I think it had Sumter, I just noticed that one.
Where's Sumter?
Americas.
Americas, which is still a little bit.
Yeah.
Two hours. But still, it's, you know, it's, that's, why aren't they in South Georgia already? If their company is, hey, why do we have to meet them before, or first ones to...
Well, I mean, Jay Smith and Lanier may have all the South Georgia business, when it's all said, and they do a lot of product, but they do have a lot of public agents.
Well, I also noticed that all those counties and cities that does business with them are all very small. White County, Cochran, all the little bitty counties, we feel, all of them are extremely small counties and cities. I didn't see any city in there that were very, to Wake Cross, Ware County.
Sumter are very, very similar. You know, they're probably a little bit smaller than we are. But we're losing population as we speak. And we're, you know, we're thirty, we call ourselves 35,000, it seems like every census count we're going, we were forty-four, I think, in the sixties, and so we're going down to thirty-five, thirty-four, I've even heard thirty-three, and DCA does the numbers. But, well, I'm not here to, you know, discount the fact that they're a smaller company or whatever, and that they're a larger company. All that was thrown into the mix in the criteria, and it's all up to the board.
That may be why all these people are leaving us, because we're not doing business with them. They have to go elsewhere to do business. You know, if you don't do it locally, all these businessmen go out of business.
Well, your products are bought from underwriters, your brokers are your local people, and he's right, they've got a presence, they've got twelve, fifteen, thirty employees here in Ware County at a location that sells not only insurance products, but home, you know, homeowners insurance, auto insurance, independent brokerage firms. So, a lot of that's not just public private benefits as a broker, they're given.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Saucy, you live in Wake Cross, but how many of your employees and owners live outside of Wake Cross and Ware County, would you say?
In our office here?
Yeah.
We have fifteen employees here in Wake Cross. Probably eight are in Wake Cross, and seven maybe in Brantley, Pierce, don't know exactly the count on that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Aldridge, did the veteran Saucy provide you with the same info, there's like the different counties?
We had, they're three representatives, yes.
Oh, okay. Did y'all check, did you?
We checked, yes.
And we have a list of their clients too, and larger than their...
Yes, so...
...all that, and that was part of the fact?
Take a minute, what's your pleasure?
Before you make that decision, Paul, could you, I don't have it in front of me, could you let them know the timeline that we have?
We've got to have mandatory educational meetings, the way that our premiums are from May the ninth through the thirteenth, and enrollment May the sixteenth through the twentieth. Our next meeting is not till the eleventh, no, it is tonight for May. We have the earliest meeting that you can have aside on the eighth, because it's always the second Monday of the month, because it so happens, Monday gets on the second this month, the first Monday gets on the second, so, May the ninth is the earliest next meeting.
I see Mr. Saucy raised his hand, do you have something?
Yes, sir, I have, just, you know, a couple of things just want to mention.
A lot of, a lot of come up to me.
You know, some of the conversation has resolved, revolved around the presentation itself. And what we have seen, and I told my wife this, you know, we don't present in very flashy or sophisticated ways, insurance is going to go very dry, dull subject, okay? But what we do do is produce results. And I think that's what Ware County is interested in. We've seen enough presentations in the past where people come in and present well. And that's probably the highlight of things, and we'll say, but, now, I don't know anything about MSI, other than what I've told you. It could be a very good firm. We represent more than forty county governments and city government units as well, as a part of our eleven hundred clients. We have a reputation that you can talk to any of our clients, here in Wake Cross, or county governments or city governments otherwise. And they will tell you good things, just like I'm sure MSI's clients said good things about them. So, I think at the end of the day, when you go through a process like this, you know, I don't think this was, I don't think there's any reflection on the committee, okay? Because some of the things I talked about earlier are more nuances of insurance. There are things about how insurance works, about the integral parts of that insurance. It's not about what's put in a brochure, but it's the reality of what brings the bottom line down to the rates. And it's how the insurance plan works. And you can't put that in a binder, and you can't put that on a PowerPoint. But the fact remains is, this market's getting more complex, related to healthcare reform, it's getting more complicated, related to regulatory issues, it's getting more costly because of consolidation of the markets. And you need every tool that you can get your hands on to help you control that cost. And whether that means somebody comes in here with a flashy presentation or not, that's what you need to look at, is the substance of what's behind the presentation and the results that it delivers.
Chairman, Mr. Saucy?
What bothers me a little bit about this process is the fact that if you've had all this time to get your numbers together, get your presentation together, and you had the benchmark of Ware County exposure, and, but yet you didn't come forward with a clear, decisive, say, hey, we're going to save you this in writing.
Right.
You know, we're prepared to do this for you in the upcoming fiscal year. But you're here trying to persuade us to support your company over another company, but yet you didn't put anything down there in concrete. So, you had your one-hour interview process, you had all the time to come forward, and now, and I don't blame you, I'd do the same thing, I would do, I would be pitching it also. But the fact of it is, if you give everyone the second opportunity, they're going to come to the table with a better offer. And, you know, we could do this for, you know, to whenever we need to call it quits. So, I guess my point is, the process has run its course, and I appreciate you defending your company. Now, I've known Smith, Jay and Lanier, and all the, mostly folks down there, I know a lot of them. But I'm going to say again, you know, I know, I know the staff better than I know anybody, okay? And I know their, I know their, I know who they are, what they are, and how they perceive and what they go after, you know, to help protect the county. And so, I'm comfortable with the decisions they made and the recommendations they made. But there's no way that we can, I wish you had brought forward your best offer the first time. Well, yes, sir, and we did try to bring very specific strategies to where we want to do the presentation. And we were told that that was not the way the process was going to work, that we were to take the questions as they were laid out and answer the questions. Because for us to deliver a strategy, we have to know a little bit about what you're doing. It's kind of like a doctor. A doctor can't render a diagnosis until they have a chance to examine you and tell you what's wrong. Well, one of the things that we wanted to do with this process was understand exactly what you're doing and dig down into it and develop specific strategies to reduce the cost. And we were told that is not part of the process. So, how...
May I address?
Yes.
When Mr. Saucy called me after the RFQ went out, there were some questions that he was asking me that were not included in the RFQ. When the RFQ went out initially, there were very specific questions that we want to answer. What was your company about, the size, you know, all the questions in the RFQ. Anyone can call and try to get specific information, but that is not the strategy. We wanted to know, what was, what could your company do? And we gave those questions. When the oral presentation, if you were selected to be finalists for the oral presentation, we asked... we asked very specific, what can you do for Ware County? During that oral presentation, forty minutes, I didn't get that from Jay Smith and Neer. I don't know about the other candidates, but what I heard was how Jay Smith and Neer was great, how they're great in insurance world, how they can do this, not what they can do from Ware County. And for me, that's why he was number three. During that presentation, I wanted to hear what you can do for Ware County, not the world, not in the market, but for us specifically, and I didn't get that.
I know from, from past experience, when you present a bid for a project that you're going to do, you could put down a deduct to whatever amount you want to put on that outside envelope. If you want to deduct a million dollars, you can write it on there. You know what I'm saying? So I'm talking about competitive bidding. And this is no different than competitive bids of any other type of work.
In the, in the, in the package that was submitted, and both in the original RFP, and I got it right, and in the subsequent RFP, there's a listing, okay, listing services, okay? Talks about all the very specific things that we can do and that we do do. But I think it's irresponsible, our approach has always been, it's irresponsible to come into a client and say, this is what you need to do, until you have a chance to understand what's going on.
But if, but if you had the benchmark, you knew what exposure we had in the past.
Right.
If you're preparing a presentation and a bid for the project, for the job, you've got that information, why wouldn't you give it your best shot the first time? Because if you're a low bidder, if you're the best in low bid, you're going to be the person, you're going to be number one. But if you, if you don't put it down there, and it's in writing, or you're ready to obligate to the customer, well, the customer's not going to, you know, they're going to look for, they're not comfortable with it because they don't have a guarantee, which everybody looks for some type of ceiling, you know?
Then I think, I think, I think to your point exactly, is that every client we work with is different. Every client has a different culture, every client has a different risk tolerance, as managers want to ask, every client has a different relationship with their employees and what they're trying to do. Clients are different in terms of their strategies. And so no two clients we have are the same. And I think that was one of the questions that came out, was what is the trend that are doing, right? I think that was a question that the county manager asked. Well, the bottom line is this, you've got people that are really leading the way in managing costs, all doing a different things, but they're doing this right for what's their, for right for what's their organization. And I think that's, you know, me looking at what your plan design was two years ago doesn't tell me a lot today.
But you've got, you have a history to work off of, and if, and if, point being is, we want to do business with folks locally, but we want the local folks to look after us also. We don't want to be just, you know, this is a two-way street for us, you know? I mean, we like for us to be considered too, because all the people in this county, unincorporated Ware County and the city are paying these bills. You do, I do, everyone here, so, you know, we're going to look for the best, best opportunity and the best deal. There's no guarantees, we know there's no guarantees, but, I'm going to say this, and this is the last I say about it, is if you had prepared your offer with some type of, you know, hey, your exposure's way too high, here's what we can do for you, you mentioned seven hundred thousand dollars, put that in writing, you know? Put it in writing. I mean, we'd like to see that. I mean, that would have been, that would have been a pretty substantial point of discussion.
Right. Well, as you say, there's no guarantees, and the seven hundred thousand says if we could get Ware County to what our average is in the area, okay, by the county governments, okay? Now, that means that Ware County willing to embrace certain strategies, maybe, maybe not. So again, it is, it is a balanced approach.
You had this discussion with the committee members on the seven hundred thousand dollars?
We had, we had a conversation about the benchmark numbers in terms of, you know, this is where the benchmark numbers are, this is where your numbers were two years ago. And so, you know, I think, I think at the end of the day, you know, we presented a package and we have all the tools, okay, to help manage that cost. And we had the results to back that up that we do that. I think the committee, this is no reflection on the committee, because I think some of the things are intuitive to the insurance world about how it works. And, and somebody says, you know, nothing's ever as expensive as something that's real cheap. And if you just go with the cheap route and you lose all the leverage, you lose capabilities and resources, you lose local control and you send it all to Atlanta, it may be the most expensive decision you ever make.
How do you, how do you explain away the fact that all these customers have come back to the committee members with all these positive results from this other company? Are we, are we to just disregard that?
Well, what I have found, and I have only found one customer they have that's south of Macon, and that's Americas. So all their, all their customers are, as I have seen, are North Georgia. So it kind of lends me to the belief of what's going to carry an extra one hundred and fifty miles here.
Which is where all the leverage is located, is North Georgia. It's not down here in South Georgia.
But I think if, if you ask the question about why are they, why are they happy? Maybe because it's where they're at, and you could be more hands-on in that approach. If you're two hundred miles away, then maybe you don't get that same leverage. I'm not saying you won't, I'm just saying you have to look at that as a, as a consideration.
Ms. Aldridge, you may not get to answer this. How does this proposal stack up before we got right now? I don't want to do anything that's going to take away from our county employees. If we can't have as good as we got, we don't need to go down here.
No, I cannot sit here and say that Shaw Hankins was bad, they were not.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Right, I understand that. But what we did, we looked at the three finalists equally. There are some things, and I had this discussion with Paul, there are some things that, me knowing some inside things that I knew about Shaw Hankins, I tried, tried for that not to be steering my decision. They were good, however, what we were offered, I get all the complaints in reference to insurance. Anybody's insurance, somebody's not calling them back, someone was charged this, I get it all from the employees. I get that, oh, I didn't know this, this wasn't told to me. Well, if you just went to your login and that information was there. So I see it, I see it from every angle. For me, I cannot base it on what Paul, while he scored, how Dr. Param scored, how Amber scored, because I actually made them go separate and do your scores and bring them back to me, because I didn't want anyone's decision to influence the other. For me, I'm only speaking as me. MSI was better for our organization with what they can deliver, from a technological standpoint, from them being their person being here every new hire orientation, them being able to come down, if I needed them to come, for whatever reason, they stated they'll be here, they have a call center as well. They had what we have plus more, and that's what swayed my decision.
Okay, Commissioner, is that it? Let's place this item on the agenda. That one, somebody will look for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saucy. Thank you. Ms. Aldridge, Dr. ... Okay, I think that's all, I may not have cleared. Commissioner, that is, Commissioner, throwing a maybe?
No.
Okay, I don't have anything other than I sent out your quarterly financials, your third quarter financials, and I sent it to you email, if you have any questions after your review, please let me know, and we'll be glad to try to drill into anything. Of course, you have our qualified audit for the year, and any questions you have financially, if you don't want to ask me, ask Mr. Philman or ask Deborah. So they've watered up, they have one question, they're head fruit. Got you.
Yeah.
Head fruit. All right. Madam Attorney, you've got anything you want to bring before?
I do not, sir.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion. That's motion to send it all the way, if I say, be adjourned in ten minutes.